Derek, you're here. You have a question for now.
Stanford.
Pledge and prayer. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America. To the republic which stands one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Everybody would please still stand for the prayer. Dear Heavenly Father, we thank you for this opportunity that we have to come before you in this great country that we live in, to be able to meet and make decisions. In other countries, that's not the case. So we just thank you so much for this free country we live in. I know there's a lot of current and former veterans in this room today, and we just ask that you watch over our military, that you protect them, that you be with them wherever they're serving, that provide us, once again, the freedoms that we have. We ask that you be with the county council in the next week, coming weeks, as they're going over budgets that the department heads would give. Good budgets that represent the needs of their departments, but also have the taxpayers' best interest in mind. We know it's a tough decision for the council, but we just want, pray that they make the right decisions. Watch over the citizens of Howard County, watch over the citizens of the city of Kokomo, and just ask for your blessings and everything. In your son's name that we pray. Amen.
Amen.
Thank you.
All right. We have any special announcements, recognitions?
No.
None. Moving on. Yes, motion approved of minutes of the previous meeting. So move.
Second.
Motion second through the meetings. All favors say aye.
Aye.
Post. They are approved. Get it signed. And moving on. This department, Mr. Stone, three.
Good afternoon, everyone. I have all these young marine faces in here along with the old ones. I have one request, and that is for a drain repair at the Kenzie Youth Center. It's been a troublesome affair for quite some time. QPH has came through and has looked at it, and they've offered to repair this, which is essentially digging up the floor, putting in brand-new drains, connecting into the good stuff. The cost of this is unfortunately fifteen thousand, three hundred and forty-one dollars. I do have sufficient funding to pay for that in my coom cup building, coom cap building repair account, eleven thirty-eight point four seven two four one.
That's an expensive drain.
It's a very expensive drain. It's exactly what we did at Haven, and it's, it's a pretty elaborate repair.
Jack, the concrete.
It's everything you can possibly imagine that's filthy in a kitchen.
Well, I would say that maybe the former director kicked the can down the road on that one.
That's you.
It's been, it's been, it's a problem that needs to be resolved, and we were able to maintain it barely, and I know it's, it's needed, so absolutely.
Then I'll move to go ahead and approve that request, fifteen thousand, three hundred and forty-one dollars.
Second. I have motion of second to accept it as presented. All favors say aye.
Aye.
Post. That is approved.
All right, thank you very much.
Mr. Stone Street. Next up, Amber Toll from the Highway Department.
Afternoon. I have two items today. The first item would be to request permission to purchase a ten-thousand-gallon, double-walled brine storage tank. This is kind of phase two of our brine operations. Last meeting, we approved the purchase of our two slide-in units to spray the roads. This would be the storage tank to hold all of our brine. So we did reach out to three different entities to get quotes for that. The winning bid, or the lowest bid, would be from AgroChem at a total of fifty-two thousand and fifty dollars even, and we do have this set aside in our equipment budget.
Amber, this may not have anything to do with the brine tank itself.
Sure.
What kind of brine will you be using?
It's just salt. We use the salt that we purchase, that we normally spread on the roads. We use that salt to make a saltwater brine. So it's just salt and water. Yep. We can eventually put some additives in there to kind of help our roads for lower temperatures or this and that, but initially, we're just gonna start with saltwater.
Okay. I know, I've been reading about pickle juice.
Bee juice, yeah. There's a lot of different variations. We've been talking to the city of Kokomo, because they have experienced, experimented with some of those additives, and so we do have some, a little bit of knowledge that we're trying to learn some, some of those aspects.
Okay.
We're just gonna keep it simple at first and learn the operation.
I make a motion that Amber be allowed to purchase the brine storage off AgroChem at the price that was read.
Second. Motion second to approve. All favors say aye.
Aye.
Post. That is approved. One more.
Yes. My second item would be to approve the LPA consulting contract for our next bridge that we're going to design. This is Bridge Forty-Seven, that is up in Cassville. This is just the next step in the process. We picked our consulting firm. The commissioners were part of that choosing process, and so this is just actually setting up the contract with that consulting firm. The winning consultant was USI, and their bid is not to exceed, for the total design of the entire bridge, not to exceed four hundred eighty-seven thousand, six hundred and fifty.
You said Bridge Forty-Seven?
Forty-six.
I notice it says forty-six here.
Excuse me, sorry. Yeah, forty-six.
All right.
I make that motion.
Make the motion. You made the motion to approve it?
You did make it.
Yeah.
I'll second that.
Motion second to approve is read. All favors say aye.
Aye.
Post. That's approved.
Did, McKinsey, did you have the copy that they were just sending?
Yeah.
They haven't? Okay.
Get it signed. Yeah. We're doing that and move on here. Under new business, I have Hoosier Heartland, ISBDC. Jordan.
My name is Jordan Jaika, and I am the director of the local Small Business Development Center. We cover twelve counties here in the state of Indiana. We have two office locations, one right in Venrick in Kokomo, and then one on Purdue's campus. We have a number of different partners. We are a nonprofit organization that help fund our operation, including the SBA, the IEDC at the state level, IU Kokomo, Howard County, and the Greater Lafayette Chamber as well, which all contributes to our organization. The counties that we cover, like I said, we kind of primarily focus on Kokomo and Howard County, as well as West Lafayette and Tippecanoe County, but we do serve a lot of the rural counties around there, so Benton, Carroll, Cass, Clinton, Fountain, Miami, Montgomery, Tipton, Warren, and White all fall within our jurisdiction. What do we do? So we provide no-cost business consulting. So what we do is we really empower the small business community to build local economic development. That's myself as the director. I have two business advisors that work one-on-one with small business owners to help them grow and start their companies, and we work really with a pretty wide range of people. It can be somebody with a business idea, all the way up to, we have some clients who've been in business through several different generations of family members for up to a hundred years. So it's pretty interesting, the wide range of clients that we get to see. What we really focus on tends to be business planning, financial planning, providing market research for local businesses. We have access to over fifty different databases that can provide them very specific demographic reports to help them fine-tune their marketing plans and really understand their demographics. We do, one of our big focuses has been providing more webinars to people in business. Historically, we've really focused on helping smaller startup companies grow, but we're trying to provide more value to people already in business. That's been a big ask and a big need in the community here. So we're doing webinar series on topics such as using artificial intelligence in business, using social media. We just did a kind of a in-depth dive into financial planning for people already in business, because that can be a little more complicated compared to people that are already in business. So really trying to diversify what we do. We historically have just done that one-on-one counseling, helping people individually, but that webinar component has been really big for us. I mentioned some of the market data that we have is very, very in-depth and very costly, and we can provide all of this at no cost due to the grants that we receive from the local community. And some of these market reports, if you went to go buy them individually, they'd be thousands of dollars. So it's a great add-on service for people looking to build their business. Some other areas that we've been focusing on as a state, exporting has been very large. There's a huge market out there outside of the state of Indiana, so if we're able to expand the local economy, build jobs here, but export those products internationally, that's been a huge focus of our organization. So statewide, we actually have an exporting advisor who specifically understands the regulations of what you need to do to export, because that can be very complicated and overwhelming for people just diving into that market. So it's been another big area. Manufacturing is a big focus area of ours as well. We have throughout the state, three manufacturing specialists who will actually travel onsite to facilities to help manufacturers maximize their efficiency of the operation. So it's a really cool add-on for us, because historically, we've been business generalists. We can help you business plan, financial plan, marketing, but we don't always have that technical expertise. Everybody on my team has a little bit of a different expertise. I owned and operated restaurants, so I work a lot with hospitality clients, and that's kind of my bread and butter in my background, but we really need to start supplementing that with other specialty services, which has been a big focus. Comparing this year, what we've done and the number of clients we've helped compared to last year, we've had huge growth over the last year. So all of last year, we helped four hundred and thirty-four people start and grow businesses last year, and already through today, I ran this this morning, we've helped four hundred and ninety-one so far. So we still have three months, you know, we're expecting to probably hit somewhere around six hundred, which, you know, compared to four thirty-four is a big difference. And a lot of that has been, so I've been the director, this is my first full year, I just completed it. We've done a lot more outreach efforts, trying to really be a part of the communities that we're serving, which can be a challenge when you have twelve counties. That's a lot of counties and a lot of people to try to serve, but I have traveled all around our region to try to make sure everybody's being served effectively. Some of the other numbers behind what we've done over the last eight months here, we've helped people acquire over ten million dollars in small business loans to help start or grow their operation. We've supported over twelve hundred jobs, which means the people that we're helping have employed over twelve hundred people over the last eight months or so. And then we've helped over, I, I always think this one is kind of interesting, because it shows how engaged we are with those clients. So over a hundred of our clients, we've helped for more than ten hours, one-on-one. So we've sat down across the table from somebody, and it's hard to find that kind of one-on-one individualized consulting in our world, so there's a lot of impact in that. To break it down a little more micro, Howard County clients, a hundred and fifty-three of those, four hundred and ninety-one, it's between Tippecanoe and Howard County, those tend to be our two biggest. Howard County's our number one this year, and locally, we've helped start twenty-one new businesses in Kokomo, who have invested close to four million dollars now in capital this year. So that's all that I have. I appreciate the opportunity to talk.
You're doing a good job.
Thank you.
Appreciate it.
Thank you.
All right. Next up, Mr. Brad Simone.
Thank you. Brad Simone, Eastern Howard County. I'm here to talk about well protection and the giant solar field you guys want to put out by my house, so I brought some stuff we were looking after to go over with you today. These are actually guidelines from Environmental Protection Agency in the United States of America. So I've talked to several of you, most of you about well protection. I hear we're working on some things. I've heard, we're not sure if we can get tested how often. Look, that first page, I highlighted for you, the EPA says annually. So if you're gonna get us tested, we should do it right, and it's gonna be annually, not once or twice a year, once every five years, or once every, it should be once a year, minimal. You turn the page, reasons why, conditions near your well have changed significantly. Examples will be flooding, land disturbances, new construction, and industrial activity. I think that kind of fits the description of what's gonna go on out there, we're gonna have some new construction, and that'll be a lot of industrial activity with over two million solar panels. Turn the page again. Where we live is also considered intensive agriculture. Now, I couldn't find it in this one, but in the EPA's, you get on their website, look, you'll find out, when you live in these areas, they recommend twice a year for testing. So to go back to my numbers, now we're at a thousand dollars for me to test my well every year, annually. Now you turn the page one more time. I've highlighted another thing for you to check out. Treatment. So depending on the contaminant and its concentration, condition of the well, you may need a new source of water or to drill new well. So my question is, does our ordinance have anything in there that pertains to that? If and when our wells are contaminated, is there some sort of contingency plan to rectify that problem, such as drilling us a new well, or is that gonna be on us landowners that aren't involved with this project? I don't think it's in the ordinance to answer my own question, so.
How long have you lived where you're at now?
Eleven years, sir.
Eleven years. How many times have you tested your well?
I've tested mine a handful, I can't count exactly how many, but I tested them. I know I tested it once, she said, bring it back, he had some E. coli, but it was outside the window, so I had to do it again, but I was inside, there's a twenty-four-hour window for E. coli. If you have a positive response inside that twenty-four hours, then you are contaminated. But she said mine was right at the cusp, so I had to test again, and then I've tested once or twice after that, Jack.
You've tested your well once?
I've tested it three times, at least, minimal. I know that for a fact, but I'm not sure how many total I've tested it. No, have I done my due diligence? No, I haven't. But I don't want somebody else coming in here and saying, well, you haven't done it, so we're not gonna do it. Well, you might as well say, well, the Delco contaminated the ground, so we can do it too, right? That's, we can't live by those standards. You turn that page again, I highlight another one. This one's kind of interesting. Check through the local health department or environmental agency to ensure activities in industry on or near your property are set a safe distance from your well.
I guess my point in asking that question was, I bet if I asked your neighbors, they would probably say something similar to what you're saying.
You're probably right. And I'm sure if you ask anybody in the county, not just Eastern County.
Absolutely.
They probably all answer the same. We're not concerned about it, but now when you're gonna go put two million panels around my house, I won't have to have a little concern now.
When I lived in the county, I don't think I ever liked this, but you have to be honest.
You know whose fault that is? It's yours, it's mine, it's ours to live out there. It's our fault.
So.
And we'll take accountability for that. It's our fault, right?
I guess even the church I go to, that's in the county.
They probably don't test.
We've never tested.
They should.
Yeah, you're right.
They should.
But I guess my point is, I'm trying to make is that in the ordinance, it says that the well will be tested prior to construction and after construction.
Or?
It just says tested.
Damage. It says for damage.
Well, and I guess my fear is damage, because of all that pounding that's gonna go on.
I agree. Also fear about chemicals.
My church just replaced their well, and I can tell you, it's very expensive.
Absolutely.
So that was my fear, was damage.
And who would that be on? So the dam, if it's damaged, well, the solar company's got to pay for it.
That would be on the company's.
Well, if I get contaminated, now who pays for it?
That's why I test it before, because they may find, they may find that a well is damaged before they even start. Now, who's, who's that on? Well, that's on the homeowner.
Right.
But if it checks out okay, and then they do all this pounding with those posts, whatever they call them, and then it's damaged, now that's a different story.
But that's damage. I'm talking about contamination, so these are two different terminologies. I'm talking about things that can give me cancer, things that can kill me. A damaged well, I don't think's gonna give me cancer or kill me. Does that make sense? So I understand what you're saying. We have it in there for, maybe, maybe you're taking one on a stand-out context. There's, there is, there are wordings in the ordinance that says we're protected for damage, not contamination.
Right.
And I'm sure a lawyer, well, they won't talk to me, because I have representation, but they will tell you that contamination and damage are different. That's apples and oranges. So I just wanted to point these, these are things I'm pointing out, you know, because they're the ordinance, I don't think's very strong yet. I think it's getting there, I think it was getting there, and then we had to get in a hurry about it.
And the contamination that you're talking about, I understand there's differences of opinions, because I've read them, and I told you that before the last meeting, that we were looking into that.
Uh huh.
And I have, and I've talked to both companies, and I think in the Good Neighbor Agreement, it talks about some well testing.
Once again, I don't, I'm not qualified for the Good Neighbor Agreement.
No.
A Good Neighbor Agreement only affects those that are adjacent. Adjacent means touches.
I understand.
Not a road.
I understand.
Not a ditch, and I'm, I have those three. I'm on a corner, so I have two roads. I have a ditch, so I have it triangulated properly, and I have a ditch. So they could come right up, not to my property, because I have a ditch and a road, but I mean, I don't get the Good Neighbor, I don't get the bribe money. That's what I'm gonna call it. You can call it Good Neighbor, it's bribe money. Here's some money, be quiet. The next page I had was talking about your local health department, environmental agency to ensure activities in industry on or near your property are set a safe distance from your well. So was this done when we wrote our ordinance? Did we contact the health department and environmental agency prior to writing our ordinance? And if we did, Mr. Wilson, I'd like to see those documents. And if we didn't, then that's one of those things that we didn't do right again. And then the next, next page says to identify potential sources of contamination in your community. I'm highlighting, you should be aware of other possible sources of contamination, i.e. solar panels, in your community or maybe moving to the area. So this has lots of potential to move to my area, so I'm trying to do my due diligence and protect my well and my neighbors, because, I mean, we're neighbors. So that's all I have, guys. I'm just trying to point out some things that maybe you weren't aware of when it comes to contamination. I'm pretty serious, especially when you're seeing on the TV now, all the stuff about the PFAS, contamination, atriple F-1, firefighters, I mean, it's, it's an endless thing, and it's in everything, whether the solar company tells you or not, I promise you, it's in their product. I haven't been wrong with one thing I've said yet, in spite, I would put money on that one as well. Thanks for your time, guys.
Thank you, Brad. Thanks, sir. Moving into claims reports, salary claims.
Nine hundred and sixty-five thousand, one hundred and eighty-two dollars and sixty-three cents.
Move to approve as presented.
Second. Motion second through the salary claims as presented. All favors say aye.
Aye.
Post. They are approved. On to payroll expense.
Nine hundred and sixty-five thousand, one hundred and eighty-two dollars and sixty-three cents.
Move to approve as presented.
Second.
Motion second to approve payroll expenses presented. All favors say aye.
Aye.
Post. Those are approved. On to operating claims.
One million, one hundred and six thousand, eight hundred and seventy-five dollars and ninety-eight cents.
Move to approve as presented.
Second.
Motion second to approve as presented. All favors say aye.
Aye.
Post. That is approved also. Do we have any claims to ratify?
None.
About monthly reports?
None.
Grants?
None.
None. All right. Keep on the roll. Down to county attorney.
I have a State Board of Accounts, Form One, budget estimate for the Meyer opioid settlement that Brad has signed. We just need to ratify Brad's signature on that.
Motion to ratify my signature. Motion as read. Second it, Jack.
Second.
Motion second to ratify my signature. All favors say aye.
Aye.
Post. Signature is ratified. Anything else, sir?
That's all.
Nothing. All right. Missionary issues. Have a, Mr. Todd.
Yes, sir, I did. At last meeting, we received the employee study from our HR department, and I want to thank our HR director for doing that and bringing it to us. Employee feedback's very important. Employees are our most important asset that we have, and that employee study, we had one hundred and sixty-two responses out of almost four hundred, but we didn't hear from all of our employees, and I realize it was some negative responses there, and a big one was about our compensation. I want to talk a minute about our compensation. And what wasn't reflected in that employee study was, for the last two years, the county has given our employees five percent raises, and that's pretty much unheard of here in the county, to get a five percent raise, especially back-to-back like that. And our employee health insurance, remember when I first started, our deductible was forty-five hundred dollars. We have, over the last two years, we have lowered that, it is now two thousand dollars. That's direct money out of the employees' pockets, so that has saved employees' money. Last year, we were able to keep our insurance premiums flat, there was no increase in our insurance premiums. In the world of insurance, that's pretty much unheard of, but we were able to do that. And again, that's money right back into our employees' pockets. Our HR department last year probably put on one of the best Christmas parties that we had, or that's what I heard from employees. So we've done some really good things, and I just wanted to talk about that. That's not saying we don't have a ways to go yet, and we're working on that. The council is working real hard to see what we can do this year, and I think we'll do some positive things this year, and with the council and the commissioners have worked really well together, and I think we'll accomplish some good things in our, along with our HR department and the other department heads. I think you'll see some good things. Employee surveys are important. Our compensation, we still need to do some work on that, but to do some work, we need to do a comprehensive compensation study. And what that means is that we need, I've been involved in these before, my background is HR, that we hire a company to come in, and they actually, first thing they do is they look at your job descriptions, and they completely redo them so that they're appropriate, so that they're, they can take those and go out and do a compensation study, and they do that. And, you know, we're gonna find that we have some issues, I guarantee it, and we can't fix them at once, but what they do is they work with the council and the commissioners, and they develop a pay plan so that over a couple of years, we can start fixing things. That's how a comprehensive study is done. Not cheap, I guarantee it's not cheap. It's probably, I know when I did it, it was like thirty thousand dollars, but it's very intense, and, and it's done well. So yes, we, we got a ways to go, but we'll get there, but I appreciate, you know, the feedback, and we all took it, and we looked at it, and so I wanted to get back. I said we'd take it under advisement, and we did, and so we looked at it, and I wanted to come back and kind of explain that. So thank you, Carrie, for doing that and presenting it, so I'll give you guys a chance to say anything you want.
With only that, Jack, I might add that the PERF, most counties require the employee to pay three percent of their PERF. Our county funds that, where you don't have to pay that as well. That's a, that's a really good perk as somebody that is retired from the county, I can tell you, that's a, a nice, a nice, a nice perk there. In lieu of what you've said, it's kind of ironic that the survey came out when it did. We have actually been working on some changes for next year, and we'll probably announce those about the time that the county council talks about raises and things of that nature. So we were in the works of making some additions. So we were in the works of making some additional changes to the benefits, and we feel like they're positive changes for the employees. So those are going to be coming down the pipe probably in the next thirty days, I would say, somewhere in that nature. So I just add to what you said there.
Thank you. You guys covered it all. Good job. Uh, I don't have anything, but I do have one other person we need to hear from, Corey Childs. We didn't know where to put him, and they said to put him under our business. So it wasn't actually new business, because it's nothing new. He spent a report on Berrycom, the fiber optic ring that we're doing all around Howard County.
Yes, I'll try to quickly connect, Carrie, Jeremy, put a different controller. Give it a sec.
It's close.
You'll see all this screen.
It's close.
Windows, E plus A.
Didn't know it.
There you go. Windows, E plus A. Take that. I just heard the wireless play. Okay. You can take your laptop powered up. It's loading that way.
So Corey Childs, president of Berrycom. Several months ago, we set out to build a ring throughout Howard County. We're, we're near completion, so I'm excited to give some updates today, and also in conjunction with some exciting announcements from the state that should allow fiber to continue beyond this initial ring. So I'm going to move first to a map, which will give kind of an indication on where we're at today and where we have to finish. Everything in green, you'll see, well, first of all, let me describe the colors of the lines. The, everything in blue is, is what we'll complete. Everything in red is either projects in motion or projects we intend to do near term above and beyond the initial fifty-five mile ring. So we are now kind of in the final stages of this, this project. On September eighth, we'll have the entire section to the west complete. And then September twenty-second, we'll, we'll finish, I guess if it's a clock, you know, around ten, eleven o'clock of the ring. And at that point, the project will be complete. There are multiple egresses, too, that we've introduced into this ring. So as homes and businesses connect to this fiber network, they have multiple paths out to the internet, to the outside world, to where they need to connect. So it's, it's a stout network with very high uptime. We're excited to be towards the tail end of this. We've hooked up customers all the way. So everything in green, we've determined is active or available to homes and businesses within a thousand feet of the network. And then what you see in pink is will be finished in September. So in addition to those efforts, we've tried to create a lot of awareness within the community through multi, multiple marketing efforts. Some of you might be sick of our YouTube ads or seeing us on Facebook. We're out there quite a bit. But the idea is to get the word out that fiber is available, and then also leverage some of the state programs that are out. So there's the Indiana Connectivity Program, but the one that's most recent and will be applied for by Berrycom is the Next Level Connections Program. There's eighty million dollars available throughout the state, and we will be working with the county to apply for all the addresses that have been deemed unserved in the county already. So this next level round is different than the others, in that there's already addresses that have been determined by the state that are unserved, and it provides a great opportunity for us to extend beyond this ring, much deeper into the county. The idea is to continue to push into all the edges and then also inward. This project is focused on rural Howard County, ultimately want to serve all the unserved, and then, you know, eventually push further into town. On the west side of the county, the purple line ends the county. What's the road coordinates on that? Uh, right there at New London, is that? Is that seven fifty? Yeah, so that's, that, the road that goes straight into town.
Seven fifty west.
Okay. Yeah.
I wasn't sure.
So that, that's, that's where we're at today. There, as I mentioned, there's eighty million dollars within the state. I think in Howard County, we're going to apply for twenty. Berrycom's invested three million on top of the award for this ring already. We'll be up to four with the drops as we're delivering to customers. I'd say in general, the reception's been tremendous. The interest has been very high. We're going to try to continue to create more and more awareness and use these programs, as we said, to push to all, all the homes and businesses throughout the county.
Nice. There's been a lot since you started.
Yeah, thank you.
Corey, can you talk about, for people who are sitting here who want to know more about what you're doing, how to get, how to speed test their home, if you're making mistakes?
Sure. Yeah, yeah, absolutely. So first of all, always reach out to Berrycom if you need any assistance at all. Our website, our phone number's published. But there's also several programs that are, that are out there today where you can basically create awareness whether you're, if you're unserved. If you have poor broadband today, the state and the federal government are, are taking that under advisement and building a database of addresses that are deemed unserved. And so there's two programs that are going to address that. There's the state Next Level, and then there's the federal deed program, which is eighty billion dollars. Of that eighty billion, Indiana's going to get nine hundred million. So this is really the opportunity, if you're unserved, now's the time to seize the moment. Only way to do that is to do your speed tests and supply that up to these programs that are available. So there's the Indiana Farm Bureau site. What's the state site that was just released?
Connecting to Indiana, right? New speed test site. If you don't, don't have broadband in your house today, you can text the number that's on the Indiana, the state site, or you can call it to report your speed test. So put it in, you know, ten sticks, one anything, text or call is another way to do it.
Yep. Yep. And, you know, obviously, I don't have that off the top of my head. Feel free to call or email us. We'll direct you to those independent sites that will let you run that speed test on the spot. It'll give you the results, and, and it'll, it'll actually take those results and put your home on the map as unserved if you truly are.
How do you know? Now, what'd you say, Tom, Dan?
Yes.
I have the Wi-Fi hotspot. Is that broadband?
Well, it's, um...
Because that's all I can get.
Yeah.
So I'm underserved, I'm underserved, right?
Right, right.
So by your map here, all the way out that side of Greencown.
Yep.
Then where your red lines are going, that's eleven hundred east, or no? No, that's, that's two thirteen.
I'm going to be bad with the roads. I'll just...
Yeah, so, so I'll say...
Eight hundred.
The initial expansion around Greencown is kind of up there by the reservoir, a couple legs, and we apply for, we get any type of program, we apply for. If you apply for ICP, Indiana program, Berrycom, it's up to forty-eight hundred dollars per home, not to exceed, I think, twenty-five thousand per day. So there's one little waste, and we have plans with Next Level Connection. We didn't, we didn't show the polygons that have been shared privately, but we're, we're really going to blow out the fiber expansion. We're going to grab to twenty million. Just this ring, we have between the grant that we rewarded in our company, it's probably going to be close to a several hundred million dollars just by mine.
Then one other thing, there's a giant substation out east there. Does that affect your signal?
No.
All the houses up there.
No, it's, it's, it's all buried. But, and I would say if your, if your neighbors are unserved and they've applied, then that probably isn't a region that we're, that we've, that we have plans for. But yeah, I'd encourage anybody that's unhappy with their internet to submit those speed tests so that the state and federal agencies know and can include you in this last program to extend broadband all.
Nice.
Yeah, thank you. Thanks, Al.
Thank you.
Next up, I have Randy Strauss. Who's sure up next? That's why Pam said, plus she's getting written right here.
I'm actually leading VS Engineering. It's been fun working with you guys. I know we've been stalled a little bit waiting on the railroad, on the rail project, but I'll be leading VS Engineering. Jimmy Monroe actually is coming on board. We continue to work with the city of Kokomo, staff there on acquisition of railroad crossing, personal railroad property. So we'll, we'll keep you posted on that stuff.
Welcome aboard.
Thank you.
Thank you. Now, public comment.
Why is it beating up? So I guess it's me. Jerry Paul, I live in Kokomo, Indiana. I'm the president of the Howard County Memorial Corporation at Veterans Memorial Park, the intersection of Goyer and Bell Avenue. I'm here on behalf of our group to get your permission to put a new monument on the courthouse lawn. We've all got manila envelopes with the information in there. The first one is an overlay, like a Google shot of what the outline will look like. It's kind of hard to look at it. She did it kind of light. We tried to get it darkened, but it didn't kind of work out. If you look at the next one, the, the graphic, they say it's going to consist of three walls. The first wall will be seven foot tall with Ophamae Johnson's cameo on there. And if you don't know who Ophamae Johnson is, do you guys all know who she is?
Just first, uh, marine. Don't have it all, go ahead.
Get going. She recognizes the first woman to be in the new marine women's branch.
I had it up there, but I lost it.
She was born in eighteen seventy. The interesting thing about it is she was born in Kokomo, Indiana, so since my family's been here for a long time, it's kind of, we've dropped the ball on her. Should have been done a long time ago, and it should have been done right. So what I propose is there'll be three walls, seven. She'll be on the front one with the bronze cameo, and the sculpting will be done by Benjamin Victor, and he's already proven himself, the Women's Monument and the Blue Star, Gold Star Family Memorial. The second one will be black granite with white lettering and gives a biography of who she is and little background on her. And the third one will be eleven foot tall, and it'll have the Globe and Anchor of the Marine Corps, and it'll light up at night, so it'll be solar powered. And then the wall curves around with a little bit of wrought iron, and there'll be a bench, and it'll say USMC seventeen seventy-five.
Seventeen seventy-five.
That's my brothers and, it's my brothers and sisters got my back in case I forgot to write that down, I was trying to memorize it.
River Ten.
Well, we don't want to get too technical.
Time travel.
But the bench is only so big. So basically, it's like this, gentlemen, we know there's two hurdles we have to overcome. You guys are one of them. Without your blessing, it's going to go nowhere. But even with your blessing, we have to get by the National Registry of Historical Buildings, which we have. You look at the very last thing, that's the exact email that we've got from Patronicity. Patronicity is a grant organization, and they usually don't come back to the city twice, but they were so impressed with the Women's Monument that when we sent them the artwork, they're on board, and she got ahold of them and got them on board. So we've got that okayed. So basically, right now, we're asking for your blessing, and we want to put it on the northwest corner on the Buckeye and Walnut. The last time we were here, we went to the Women's Monument, we did a presentation. You guys voted on it on the spot. So let me tell you where we're at. We've had a lot of delays and a lot of things that shouldn't have happened, but people dying and people not stepping up, getting the, the design, the work that we need to get done. So Patronicity's got a program, it's a fifty thousand dollar matching grant. You've got three months to raise fifty thousand dollars. So basically, we're hoping, just like the last two times, that the county will donate ten, the city does their part, does ten, we've got an anonymous donor that will do ten if the city and the county does what they did the last two times. And we've got the, um, I suppose that place on Sycamore. Foundation people there on...
Community Foundation?
What?
Community Foundation?
Yeah, Community Foundation of Howard County. We've given them, and they're pretty enthused about it. So for us, and we've done this a lot, and everybody knows our reputation when it comes to getting stuff done, for us to raise three, ten thousand dollars in three months is, is doable. We had to start without your help, fifty would be pretty hard. But whatever amount we come up with, that's what they'll match, but we need the fifty, because I think I can pull this off for about a hundred and ten thousand, which, I'm behind, when a lot of people gasp, because the last two monuments I designed were a half a million, and I'm telling you right now, it's cheap, because you've got a world-class sculptor doing the sculpting. Same rules, same thing as last time. When it gets built, we'll provide the landscaping. The first year, we'll design everything. The only thing is, we'll give you the monument, it'll belong to the county, the same stipulation as last time. We maintain the artistic integrity of the memorial. That means no festivals on the grounds, banners, you can't take away from it or add to it, which has been pretty good, because your maintenance guy, Bill's, been real good to work with. And he's done a phenomenal job with the landscaping. And by the way, landscaping is a form of art, so we're going to make sure that it fits. So this takes care of not only Ophamae Johnson, but it also gives a shout-out to the Marine Corps. That's the reason the Globe and Anchor and the bench with their birth date on it will be on there. And I'm happy to say my brothers and sisters showed up today. There's a bunch of them here, so.
Where, where's the Army?
We only need one Army guy.
You do the Marine Corps all the time.
I'm here. I got their, I got their back, they know that. In fact, I was telling them, I was telling one of them, I said, you know as much as I do for Marines, you guys ought to make me an honorary Marine.
They should, you're right.
Yeah. So guys, basically, right now, we're in a time crunch on account of all the delays, so we want to get started with fundraising in, as soon as we get your permission, in September. Because the farther we go into the year, we're going to get in the holidays, and it's hard to raise money during the holidays. So basically, I'm asking you, from our passing, from what I've done in the past, and you all know me, you, you were there, you're the only one that was on that board for the Women's Monument. We delivered, don't you think?
Yeah.
We did more than, because there's nothing like that. In fact, just to be honest with you, it's, some people are so impressed, Women's Committee from the United Auto Workers, Region Two-B, they're coming to town in late September. That's one of the things they want to see, is that Women's Monument, because there's nothing like it anywhere.
Mr. Paul, I want to make sure I understand. You want us to approve the project, but not the money tonight, or you want the money?
Well, if you do...
I don't, I don't know, I don't know money.
Here's what happened last time. All three, and I'll be honest with you, I was done kind of, you okayed it, because I'm pretty sure I'm the first person to ever ask, well, twice, but they okayed it that night, they gave us ten thousand that night, and then we were off and running. But you're, you're the last hurdle to, to jump over. So basically, what I'm asking you guys is to have faith, the same faith you've had in me from day one, and I, I think by now, I've got a track record of some sort. Our board directors is a hundred percent on it, and then a couple of them are here tonight, too, so. We're going to, we're, there's a long-term thing to this whole thing. This is not just that corner, but I got another idea that I think you're going to like, but I got to get by one and two first.
So you guys, you still start digging, right? You locate, I mean, it's like, I don't, make, you check with maintenance and the judges and everybody makes sure they're okay with this before we...
Well, we don't usually, because you guys run the courthouse, the judges down there.
We don't run the courthouse. The judges run the courthouse.
I know who runs the budget, the judges run the budget. Here's the thing is, we don't, we didn't go before them last time, and nobody complained about it. There's always going to be somebody complain about it, but one, in my world, that one gear doesn't get to grease. Trust me.
Jerry, I got to be honest with you, my reluctance on this, which I just told you before the meeting, was there's a very nice monument to her, out at the American Legion, and it's a very nice one. nice monument to her out at the American Legion and it's a very nice one. It's located between the ninth and 10th hole.
Yeah, and nobody's going to go see it. It's not handicap accessible.
Regardless, it's a very nice, big monument.
It's nice. I don't do graveyard markers.
And the women of the Legion built them.
Well, here's the thing is, we have a Marine in this room right now that contacted me, tried to set up a meeting with them to tell them that we've been at this for a lot longer than you were doing what we're planning. You only get one shot at something, do it right. And as far, they wouldn't meet with us, they ignored us. And we, let's put it this way, if somebody comes up to me and this happened, they asked me if she was buried in that, where that spot is, what does that tell you? It's a graveyard marker. We can do better now. This is a city of first. She's the first woman Marine. That's another one to add to our legacy of who we are.
I went out there today to look at it. It's a very nice one.
Yeah, it's a nice monument. It's real colorful, but you know what? People do that all over the United States. If you get on, I'll give you an idea, the Tour of Honor, which is all 50 states. We're the only city in the entire country that's been picked three times our size. Theirs got turned down as being insignificant and didn't make the registry. Ours, this new one, will make the registry.
Well, Mr. Paul, I've come in and I did, I'd heard, you know, this was coming. You've sold me. I'll make the motion that we do this.
I'll second it.
He's convinced me to.
So a motion to second? Hall and眾 say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed?
Thank you so much now. That includes the $10,000, right?
No. That'll be later.
We've got a while, so we've got three months to worry about.
That's why I asked the question. I don't know funding wise, we're at, I'm not opposed to, you know, doing the project. I just don't know where we're at financially.
I'm going to give you a long-term idea of what I'm trying to achieve here. We have a beautiful courthouse and I've been here for 74 years. My family's been here since 1850, so we're, the Smith family's well-known. I have never heard anybody say about the courthouse, it's a beautiful courthouse. It's always the same thing. It's an ugly courthouse because you know why? People look at it, but they don't see it. Same thing with that Women's Monument. You won't, if you look at it and you don't see it, you won't understand it. That is the largest piece of artwork in Howard County is that courthouse. So my dream is, and I'm going to eye me a little bit here, is I want all four corners and I've got another plan for the southwest corner and I guarantee you that one will blow your socks off, is to turn the courthouse into an outdoor art gallery, again, as a centerpiece, and start promoting that as a piece of art. So you've got the women, you're going to have Ofa and as soon as we get that done, I'll be back with the other one because I want, well, basically, I'm going to ask you tonight, I want you to save the southwest corner, reserve it for me. And then when I get the artwork done, I'll guarantee you, you'll be blown away.
Is that going to be an Army?
No, it's going to be. Boy, he's about to turn to the Army in there. You've got an Army when the three women, the one kneeling down, some Army National Guard, you've got an Airman and you've got a civilian there, so.
Will you give Jack an Army one, please?
He's upset because there's two Marine sculptures. There's one out there, the Family Monument, and others.
And I will say that we'll give you money and I don't know how much, but we will give you money. Let us figure that part out.
That's right.
Right now, we got your okay now.
I don't know how much.
Who does the letter writing? Well, they okayed it, somebody's got to write me a letter. I've got to have a letter from you guys to give to the Patronicity people. It just has to be simple, that we had a vote.
Pam's got it.
Where's Pam at? A little finger pointing around here. Can you write that they approved it?
She's very good at it.
And as soon as you get it all, you can email it to me. I'll give you my, we'll discuss it. Thank you so much. And before I leave, I want to thank all my brothers and sisters for showing up.
Ooh rah.
That's right.
You got that right.
Ooh rah for the ooh rah.
Gentlemen, if I may speak for a moment?
Sure. I'll be coming. You're up.
Excellent. Ladies, gentlemen, and my fellow Marines, I'll try to be brief. I'm not much of a public speaker, so I'm going to speak from the heart. I will say that I've been in this job 14 months. Jerry Paul is in my office within the first two days. I do like that he's direct. I do like that he does not mince words. I've yet to muster the courage to explain to him that Army's an acronym for Ain't Ready For Marines Yet, so.
I'm going to keep fighting for Army, for Marines. No, but I'm going to keep paying all that money.
I'll say I'm from this guy's children.
I guess I can say my ass right of the Navy equipment.
I know, we follow the Department of the Navy. We like to follow the Marines Department. Thank you.
Come on.
Sorry.
I came here today in the hopes that you would approve this request by Jerry and I wanted
to give a brief bit of a history lesson because I know some of you may not be well-versed with Marine Corps history. Let me start with the story of a young high school kid who was born and raised in Miami County. 1988, I joined the delayed enlistment program and July the 4th, 1989 was my first A Marine Corps boot camp. September the 29th was the day I earned the title of United States Marine. In that three months, I am still amazed what can be accomplished by drill instructors. We learned things about the Marine Corps, like I said back here. November 10th, 1775, in Tontavon, Pennsylvania, was the day the Marine Corps was founded. We learned about the Revolutionary War, what the Marines did. We learned about Battle of 1812, where the only, Washington was burned to the ground with the exception of the 8th and 9th Marines barracks because the British had so much respect for Marines, they refused to burn that down. I think they fared retribution personally, but I'm biased. We learned about World War I, the Battle of Bella Woods, where we were given the nickname by the German soldiers, Tupelhunden, which means Del Dog. And I'm sure everybody in here knows what Del Dog is. We learned about World War II, Guadalcanal, Saipan, Iwo Jima. These battles are seared into every Marine's mind because it's what we have to live up to. We learned about Korea. We learned about Vietnam, many of whom are in here right now, who served as Marines in It was an honor and a privilege to earn the title. Imagine my surprise at MCRD San Diego when I heard about the first female Marine when I was 18, who was Ofa Mae Johnson from Kokomo, Indiana. I left Marine Corps boot camp down on Sycamore and 31 with four other young men who earned the title over those three months and became Marines. November 10th, 2022, which is the Marine Corps Birthday, it's cause for celebration in my house, like Christmas, New Year's, and 4th of July rolled into one. Last year was the first time in 23 years I've attended a Marine Corps Birthday. It was a grissom. So what's building number for Sergeant? 640. Building 640 is named after Ofa Mae Johnson now. There's also a monument out there for her. I was born in Peru. Kokomo was the big city we went to, being from the little town. I've always known Kokomo as the city of first. She was the first Marine, the first female Marine. She didn't join the Corps until I believe she was 28. She served nearly 40 years in the Marine Corps, which as any person in this room could say who's earned that title, has a long time to serve my beloved Corps. When I think about this, I look at it from three aspects. I think about that young man from Miami County, city of first. I was unaware, Jack, until you said it, that there was something to Legion. I'm not a member. I don't go there often. I go to the strawberry festival, though. I walk around, my kids, I show them this because I want my kids to know and understand what service to others is. I look at it from a professional and a personal aspect. I love being able to serve veterans and families of Howard County because you three gentlemen have allowed me to do that. I think long after everybody in this room's gone, decades down the road, because you brought it up. Why do we need one on the courthouse lawn? I want some little girl to look up at that as her parents are reading that and say, I want to do that. She's not going to see that at the Legion, she'll see it at the courthouse. So if you're able and you're a Marine, please stand. Ladies and gentlemen, there are two objectives to Marine Corps leadership. Accomplish a mission, welfare of your troops. The mission is to get this built. Welfare of the troops is honoring a troop that served from the city of first, as of first, Ofa Mae Johnson. Tell me. Oh, there is one more thing. Because there's a bit of a history, this agrees with my sources, Ofa Mae. I had the honor of serving two days now at the Indiana War Memorial two months ago when I took these photos. These would have been the posters that she saw during World War I, which would make her one memory. So if you run the fence and deliberations, please consider what I've said. Thank you.
You need a public comment. We've got another meeting, we've got to get in here shortly, but go ahead.
Thank you, Dylan. My name's Chris Sailors. I work for Elvatus Architect. I'm a retired sheriff from Fulton County at 18 and a half years in law enforcement and also served 12 years on the county council. But talked with jury, Sheriff Facher a little bit and whatnot, but just wanted to come down and introduce myself and give you some literature. Been to Mr. Lipinski's.
Lipinski?
Lipinski's facility a few times over the years as well, so anyway. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thanks.
Thank you.
Anybody else? Better, motion adjourned then.
Move to adjourn.
Motion second adjourned. I'll figure it out. Opposed? We're adjourned. We'll go right into drainage board as soon as...